And that's all I had on my report.
Any other questions? Okay, I want to add one more business. That's the school's place in order of legends. We reviewed these policies last month and I know we were bringing some things back. No way to be around the bush. This is a hot topic in our community. I've got a few things, if you will, bear with me, I'm gonna read. And I think at least it's things that we've heard from our school board attorney. It's things that we may or may not be aware of, but I do think they're, I think they're Basically, the Equal Access Act, it says, "What triggers the Equal Access Act?" Says the creation of a limited open forum is created whenever a public secondary school provides an opportunity for one or more non-curricular related students groups. That's what we operate under today. One of the other questions and answers here is, "To what schools does this act apply?" The act applies only to public secondary schools as defined by state law that receive federal financial assistance. And we obviously receive federal financial assistance between the state and our federal project somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million. Question and answer is, "Must a school board create a limited open forum for students?" The answer is no. The local school board has exclusive authority to determine whether it will create or maintain a limited open forum. However, if a school has a limited open forum, it may not discriminate against a student group because of the content, content of the group's speech. Just a couple more. May a school establish regulations for meetings that take place in its limited open forum? The answer is yes. That does not take away the school's authority to establish reasonable times, place, and manner regulating for its limited open forum. What does student initiated mean? It means that students themselves are seeking permission to meet and they will direct and control the meetings. Teachers and other school employees may not initiate nor direct such meetings, nor may outsiders. May outsiders attend meetings? Yes, if invited by the students and if the school does not have a policy barring all non-school persons. However, the non-school persons may not direct, conduct, control, or regularly attend activities at the students' group. Teachers be present during student meetings? Yes, but there are important limitations. Teachers or other employees are to be present at student religious meetings only in a non-participatory May any group be excluded? Yes. Student groups that are unlawful or that materially or substantially interfere with the orderly conduct of educational activities may exclude, may be excluded. However, a student group cannot be denied equal access simply because its ideals are unpopular. Freedom of speech includes the ideals the majority may find regret. I just thought it would be appropriate to at least read those things to know what's allowed and what's not allowed. With that, we'll go back to visit our policies. I know we asked to bring some of these back to, back to us, and I know that you compiled a list too that...
I did. I put several things on there, and I failed to ask Hattie to put the actual policies. I'll pass this to you, and that way you'll have a copy of the board policy as it exists that we posted last time. It was my failure not to get that on there this afternoon, so I apologize for that. But I did send, there's a list of the community use of facilities. I compiled what we had here at Central Office. We have a form that anybody, any organization who wants to use our facilities has to fill that out and complete it, and there's a process they work through for approval to use our facilities. So the first page is all the countywide use. There are two additional pages of all of the school use by these organizations within our community. The other sheet, or the other list that I also provided, are the, the club information for academic and non-academic clubs at the secondary level. I had shared with you earlier the ones at two high schools. This also includes the two middle schools, as well as numbers of participation, student members in each of those clubs, when they meet, where they meet, and just a short description of the clubs. So that was more for, again, just informational purposes. I also sent you the criteria revised, and I'm still not crazy about the work behind this, so I think there's still some areas that we can probably do a little better to clear up some of the language. I think there's still some work that needs to be done on that, on the criteria. And then the administrative procedures for the application, I think also probably needs a little bit of work. It's probably closer to being accurate, but it needs to truly reflect the criteria as we go through the process of getting that updated.
I have a question. This might be one, I don't know, it might have one answer, which is the case in a lot of legal kind of things, because I think that you have to be honest about what you're, what you're dealing with in any club organizations, and I think that you have to be very careful about political activism or what it's supposed to, because that's not what they're for. My first question, it is, and that's a big is, and I understand that, this school board chose to go to a closed forum school system. What is the connection between a closed forums school system with the, I guess, regulating and reducing to just curriculum based clubs and our facility usage policy? Because I don't make that connection. And what I'm trying to say is, I don't make the connection between the Leo Club and Franklin County Big League Football, they can decide a user agreement based, somebody monetary bag to use the middle school football field. So I mean, what I'm saying is, if you, if you go one way, does that mean nobody uses the facilities except school?
Well, first of all, I will not profess to be a lawyer, so I'm gonna tell you what I've been advised from our legal counsel, because I have the same kinds of questions. If, if the board elected to go to a closed forum, then the community use of the facilities, which is, includes Pee Wee Football at the old high school stadium, includes the recreational basketball leagues at Townsend, those would not be able to use our facilities. It closes all, all board property is basically off limits, to include the 4-H club.
4-H club means a tag building.
Well, but they come into the schools, so, and it was after school.
I checked on this, yeah, I asked Chris about how many of our kids are involved in 4-H. It's like 2,300.
Hey, we could go and check on that, or how many...
I did, I asked.
Ask this question.
I asked the question.
What would be the problem is if the county owned that football field, then it should have us.
Well, there would not be a problem then, because it wouldn't be board property.
And the point I'm driving at here is, I think that we haven't really put out on the table what's going on. We all know, you know, these organizations that have an outside agenda other than maybe what the majority of this county feels like to be in the best interest of their children. And taking that to heart, I did some real looking and some real searching and some real research about what's really going on with the formation of the new school at Franklin County High School. Here's what I found. I found that actually what it is, is a subset of a group called the GLSEN, which is an acronym for the Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network. And you can't deny that the two are correlated, because when you pull up their website, the first thing you see in the bottom left-hand corner is a Forma GSA Club Today with their flag. So that doesn't work for me. The two would not be correlated, is what I'm saying. And just to give you an idea, here's the kind of legislation that's been supported by these organizations. The GLS, excuse me, the GLSEN, you have to understand, this is a bill that was put to the floor in the state legislature in South Dakota, but it's also coming to the floor of the legislature in the state of Tennessee. And this organization called for the South Dakota Governor Dennis Dugard to veto House Bill 1008, but pay attention to what House Bill 1008 said. It says in here, because this was off their website, in order to prevent the discriminatory bill from becoming law, but here's what the law actually said, or the bill, I'm sorry. The bill would require transgender, non-conforming students to use the restrooms and locker rooms that correspond with their sex assigned at birth instead of their gender identity. I'm not sure we're ready to go down that road. So you have that to take into consideration, and, you know, I've heard a lot of explaining about non-bullying or acceptance, and I understand all that. But once again, when you look at another part of this website, the diversity statement with the GLSEN opposed to, it blatantly states, "Are opposed to heterosexism, homophobia, biophobia, transphobia, and other forms of oppression." Fair enough. But when in practice, or translated into practical action, what it means is the GLSEN uses curriculum, which the GSA has a curriculum, it's plain on their website, as well as a syllabus, books and other campus-wide programs and initiatives to familiarize students with the idea that homosexual, bisexual, and transgender behavior, including cross-dressing and sex changes, are normal and worthy of being embraced. And I'm only one guy, and I've only got one opinion, but, you know, the people living in this county, this money paid for these schools where these kids go to school, I think maybe why I'd check and see what they think too, because I know you get into legal things, and I know the law locks you down to some, some certain things you have to do. I'm just not sure in this case that it locks us down as tight as we get advised it does, because some legal advice that I got is not the same legal advice we got at our last board meeting. And I know, no disrespect, people are just gonna look at the same law and get to different answers. I understand that. But I think that this shows that this is way more than something that's just an anti-bullying organization, and to be very blunt, for my take on this, what it is, is an attempt to infiltrate the public school system with GLSEN and LGBT ideals, and I just, I'm not sure if I'm ready to go along with that.
I guess my question would be, Chris brought up a good point with the depression and all. Speaking of one of our principals, they, they brought up that, you know, we have sponsors who are required for these clothes, excuse me, or student organizations. I would, I'd like to know what our liability is on it if we have sponsors. I mean, is there any type of requirement that sponsors of clubs who are dealing with depression or kids who are prone to suicide, are they qualified to deal with these kids? Should something bad happen, you know, what is our liability on this?
I'll ask. I wouldn't know.
Yeah, I know you're a lawyer, but...
I'll check.
I'll also, while you're asking, if something is a non-curriculum based club and it has a curriculum, isn't that a, I need some clarity about that.
Okay.
Because to me, that's an agenda.
I feel it's important to call this board's attention to something. At this board's June 9, 2014 meeting, it reaffirmed policy, board policy 4.802, which is the title, "Student Equal Access Limited Public Forum." There were some minor revisions that were made to that board, that policy. That policy was, had been initially issued in February 15, 2001. Most of the people on this current board were on the board when this, this policy 4.802 was reaffirmed in June of 2014. The only thing that has changed since this board adopted and revised 4.802 is that there has been a group formed at the high school with, with which some people disagree about the viewpoint being expressed there. That is the only thing that has changed. I just want to caution members of this board of what the implications are for the board, for the school district, and for each of you individually financially, should you choose to change course when there's only been one change.
Individually, financially, I think you just...
Was that a threat?
No. You be quiet.
I'm sorry.
This board has protection, and when we're doing the school activities, we all have protection. And I just got through reading that says, "The local school board has exclusive authority to determine whether it will create or maintain." That means you can do it at will.
I understand that. I understand exactly what you just read, but this, what, what you're, what this board is considering, or what some members of this board is considering, some members of this board are considering, goes beyond what you read in that document.
I think that would be something that, I mean, I think we all duly know that, but I think, nobody can deny that we've been bombarded with emails from the community. We're each elected to be our representative for each of our districts, and we're the district's voice. That's why we're having this in an open meeting tonight. Here are the ramifications if we go down this road. No clubs other than the curriculum state mandate or curriculum based. At this point, we don't know, but we've been advised, nobody can use our school property. And we have Beta Club as part of that shutdown. 4-Hs may be part of that shutdown. But I still think, we are still representing the community we live in. And if that's public knowledge and we're still being asked to do that, I think that's why we're setting this up.
I think laws are created to protect both the interests of the majority opinion as well as minority opinion. It's part of living in a democratic society that's based on laws.
I'd just like to say that in recognizing the wishes or the emails and the contacts that we've had, that I feel like we need to get every bit of information that we can out to the public, that they should not be in the dark about any part of this. And one of the things that I did today was just add the number of students that would be impacted if we closed non-academic clubs, and it was over 1,100. Now, some of these students may be in more than one club, and without coming up with an exact number, we'd have to cross-reference the membership in every club. But when I look at the membership, it's over 1,100 students at Franklin County High School, Franklin High School, and the two middle schools that would lose access to something they're participating in. And that I offer just as information, that's over 1,100 students. When you look at the number of organizations, and that was just up, that attachment was just up on the screen, and you add the number of organizations that use our facilities, that number will, will add, and you can count them, to over 80 organizations. Now, that doesn't include the number of people who participate in these organizations. So we talk about changing a policy, then we're talking about affecting thousands of people in Franklin County. And as, as the public shares with, with board members their opinion, I want them to know as much as I can offer them about where, where this might lead. The other thing that, that has come up, Dr. Lomas, is that this particular situation has been tested in court, and that we, we being a person, a group that might decide to do that, it's my understanding has never prevailed. And I'd like to, I personally, because I haven't seen them, would like to see some of the case history and see what was involved in it, just for my own information and to share with, with community members who are interested in reading that.
What do you mean by that, that hasn't prevailed?
That it was my understanding, is my understanding, that when an organization, a board, has changed a policy from limited open to closed, and it was clearly targeting one group, that if that, and it goes through the offices of the rights, it does not go to your local county court, it's a civil rights issue. And in the two years or so that it takes for that, that particular case to travel through the courts, that, that the school boards, the school systems have not prevailed in being allowed to do that. Now, I'd like to research that myself, because I'm, I'm working on hearsay, and that's my leading thing. I would absolutely know, but I think we all need to know more about that, because what's involved in that litigation process, and Dr. Lomas, you might just speak to that a little bit, should we find ourselves in that situation, what's involved in it.
Again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just basing what I say on, on the advice of our board attorney, and you all were pretty of those same discussions as well, but I can get more information for you on that and bring it back to you about particular court cases and the findings and that.
I think that would be interesting, about information and pertinent information with what any kind of decision is made.
I just have, I have a question, a clarification question. Do you have the policy in your hands that can go on the board? The student clubs and organizations?
6.702.
Number one, student organizations are an extension of the academic curriculum and are intended to complement the basic instructional program. To what does that pertain? How is that, how are you all interpreting that particular sentence? And does all of our organizations meet that criteria? And does it even obtain to all the organizations, the clubs?
Well, if you're asking to interpret that sentence, it means that any student organization or club you have, should have some kind of value back to the academic structure at the school. In other words, a math club would obviously have some kind of academic value to math class.
Or the guitar class for the music.
Credit run, those kinds of things.
However, the current, there are two policies at play here, and we've been focused on this policy, 6.702. Well, 4.802 raises, is, raises and creates another meaning by the mixture of student. It says, "Schools may allow students to form non-curricular clubs or groups that meet before, during, and/or after the school day. Requests to form such clubs or groups shall not be denied based upon the religious nature or beliefs of proposed club or groups. If permitted, school administrators shall ensure that all clubs and groups have the same abilities to access facilities and advertise their meetings." This policy was adopted to implement the Equal Access Act. That's what this board did back in 2001. That's what this board did in June 2014. And it creates what we have, you know, you, one could interpret student clubs and organizations as applying to curricular or non-curricular or extracurricular clubs that have some link to the, to instructional curriculum, the school day curriculum. But 4.802 allows for the creation of other student-led, non-curricular clubs.
So are you saying they're in conflict with each other?
No, they're not, they're not in conflict, but they need to be, they need to be read together to encompass every single group or club that exists at the two high schools and the middle schools.
But Adam says may, not shall.
May, it does say may, but what it does is, if you allow it, the next sentence, "Requests to form such clubs or groups shall not be denied based upon the religious nature or beliefs of proposed club or group." This comes straight from the Equal Access Act. This language is consistent with that, and the fact that we have allowed some groups to form under this policy means we can't discriminate based on the content or viewpoint expressed in that group's speech.
I think in the, in the one Ms. Hopkins is talking about, I think those two sentences, one and two, are only relevant if you're in a closed forum. I think that's the only time that sentence comes into play. Because just like...
As an equal access protects the other student initiative, they don't have to be curriculum based. As written, I would agree with that.
Well, as an individual board member, it is my understanding that the principal of the schools, along with the very next sentence addresses and the faculty and the student body representative, shall approve all clubs and organizations within the school of what happened in this particular case. It is up to this board, all we do is make policy. We hire one person, and that's Dr. Lomas. So I just want to, I want to be clear, I'm not coming in one way or the other, but I want to make sure that I'm, I'm voting on a policy, I want to know for sure what that policy means, not just for this, but for any future...
Right. And I think personally, that this particular policy in lines four and five somehow needs to include the director of schools in the approval process. I mean, if you look, if you look at the way the latest club was formed, I got a call from the newspaper, that's the way I found out, because it doesn't go through the board.
No.
So I think we need to at least know that you know, or the director of schools knows, what, what clubs are being, being formed.
So do you want me to bring back some language on that then for the board meeting to add to that? Is that what...
That's my opinion on this, on this...
Okay.
I would ask for a definition between organization and political activist organization, if there's any difference in the two.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If there's a difference between student clubs or organizations and political activist organization, what's the definition or the difference between the two? So I think that's, that's pretty, pretty obvious.
Another question that I might have there too is, Kevin, I believe when you were going over some ground out there at the very beginning, and saying that secondary schools who receive federal funding fall under that. If this board chose to go to a closed forum, is that going to affect... If this board chose to go to a closed forum, is that going to affect elementary as well as secondary? Or does this act not speak to elementary?
My understanding, and I think this is consistent with what Kevin read, is that the Equal Access Act only requires, if, only applies to secondary schools that receive public funding. So it does not, it does not require, if you have a limited open forum at the high school, it does not require that you have one in an elementary school. It also does not require that you have one at a middle school. And I'm, I don't know if, I don't know where the cutoff is off the top of my head for state law where secondary-
I thought secondary is middle and high school.
So it could be put to the lady down.
So, okay, so then, so then it would not apply to K through five?
Okay, what I'm asking is kind of the opposite scenario of that, if we chose the closed forum, does that apply to all-
Funding for elementary schools.
Not just-
So would that apply, I want to ask you to look, it might not be what you're saying.
That's what I'm asking.
But would it affect elementary?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, the elementary is already effectively closed forum.
Well, I guess from the standpoint, just to be a simplified example of that, if you just a closed forum, and elementary says is exempt from that, then, then these, you know, when we talk about 4-H club, which is really an impact on its elementary, those kids are all involved in that, is that going to prohibit them maybe in the elementary setting? If you're in a party, just turn it off.
Well, I think it's confusing, and I think, I think it's hard because equal access says specifically secondary.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know that that, that's a pretend.
Well, secondary is seven through what?
Six through twelve.
Six through, but not where your middle school, so you're talking about-
When you close your campus, and the list that I have closed, every campus, closed every campus, and some of the, some of the community activities take place in our elementary schools, then I would think 4-H being a community organization, and our campus is closed, I think they can't come.
But what Clay Joe said is it would just be a closed forum.
For secondary. So then all of these activities that go on in Franklin County using our campuses could continue to go on in our elementary schools?
That's a good question.
That's what I want to know. That's a question.
Okay.
So we need to define secondary?
I'm going to verify that.
Or is the Equal Access Act only pertains to secondary?
Right, I'll clarify that and get that information to you.
Just how many students did you say? What, four-hands, four-hands?
The number I was given when I called and asked that was 2,300, so we can add those to the 1,100.
Yeah, I have. Add that to 1,100, so now we're at- Three, four hundred, which is over half of our student population.
You don't have to close it. I'm going to remove you if you speak out again. You know the rules, it's, this is a board meeting in a public setting.
But we don't know yet.
Sorry.
We don't know. We don't have, those elementary 4-H students cannot continue, just like we don't know.
That's my point, that's what I want.
That we can keep on with the junior general, and they can just like-
Dr. Lummis is going to run that down.
Oh, I'll send that.
And my point is, Mr. Dis, that we need all of this information before we make a decision.
I agree.
An informed decision is a good decision.
Well, and I say that from the outset, I think the public needs to know, because I mean, we, we all get the same emails, or at least we, they're all addressed to us. You know, we've gotten some for support, we've gotten some for shutdown, and quite frankly, it's not, it's not as easy as just doing one or the other.
It's not.
Well, it is, but some people that you speak with too, I mean, this is true, some people I spoke with, you know, the shutdown sounds pretty great, and we can mention the fact, but look, here's the baggage with that, then you've got another conversation going on. I just want to make sure that whatever decision we make is the best decision that we can make for the kids of our children. That's all I want.
For sure. It's the right decision.
Any other questions, or any other that we can put on Dr. Lummis' list that burned back?
Somewhere, somewhere, was it in the, you when we was working on, or already there, that students were not allowed to recruit in these clubs? Where did I see that? Was that the new when we were working on?
It's in the, the club organization.
The process, wasn't it? Procedures and process.
That this is, this is no solicitation for membership, but that's, that's, that's an administrative procedure for six point seven zero two, as it stands right now. And that, you know, taking literally no solicitation means-
That's the new one, that's the one we're revised, or looking at revise, maybe revising.
Is that the way it's currently written?
Was that, what's, this one right here?
About this list, I just-
That's the procedures. That was the corrections that you all gave me last month, we went back and incorporated those.
So that's just the one?
It's the second version of it, but it's based off of the existing policy.
No, no, that's an administrative procedure, that's, it's, 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 the purpose of that is to implement policy.
But what we're saying is that- It still could be a work in process, though they don't have this at the school level, right?
No, they don't.
Then we have it voted on there.
Right.
And it would seem, it would seem to me at this point in time, it's, you know, whether any change you made to procedure or policy would not be something that could be implemented until next year.
Until next school year?
Yes, yes, for next school year.
As I looked at this again, there were a couple of things that I highlighted. The second bullet, ten students to establish a club, but it doesn't say ten students to maintain a club. And there were some on our list that didn't have that many, that's just an FYI. And down about a third of the way, once a quarter, a school administrator will attend a meeting of each established club to ensure the meeting agenda is, agenda is followed, and I wonder if that's with enough regularity? That would be three times a year if you look at a quarter system. And I wonder if, if, given our discussion, if we want to increase that supervision of all clubs? And finally, right at the bottom, it said, "All clubs and organizations will be reviewed every five years by the principal and the leadership team," and I, I think a more frequent review.
A practice should be in.
Yes, I would too. I think in any way, you need to look at what the clubs are doing.
Well, I'll throw this out too, to, to put another one on your list, but, but according to this question and answer, it says, "My schools require a minimum number of students to form a non-curriculum related club, not if it limits the rights of the students, group of students. Here must be exercised that the school cannot discriminate against numerically small student groups that wish to establish a club. If the number of clubs begin to tax the available space in a particular school, one teacher might be used to monitor several small groups in meetings. The key is to be flexible and accommodative."
So do we need then to take this ten?
That's what I would, I would, I would pass that through our internal, because according to this, I don't think the number will hold up.
And we have clubs in existence according to this hand, this, this list that don't have them.
Right.
I would, I would take a different take on the once, once a quarter observation by a school administrator. That is, if you take, I think I have the numbers.
That's a lot of work, what you're back to.
That's a lot, that's a lot of work, I mean, that's, you, you have-
That's almost another round of the evaluation.
That's, that's, if you have roughly, at Franklin County High School, I think it's roughly twenty. It is ten academic clubs and seventeen non-academic clubs. If you're, if you're requiring that of all academic clubs, that's twenty-seven times four per year.
I think if you look at-
They don't meet the summertime visits.
Oh, three, three.
So it'll be three.
So three, twenty-seven times three, still that's eighty-one visits.
Divided by how many administrators?
Four. Four, so it's, it's still, it's still twenty a person. And you also, we have to remember that you have a faculty advisor at that meeting, that advisor's responsibility is to, as an employee of the school district, is to see that policy is being adhered to, that, that students are behaving in accordance with, under policy, that they're, every single policy that applies, just about every single policy that governs student behavior during the school day, applies during these club meetings. I would suggest that if you have, if you have a doubt about a faculty advisor's ability to monitor the group, the concern is with that specific employee, not in terms of that you need more supervision. Now, if there is an issue, you could have, there's nothing that says an administrator, you know, can't go to a club that is, has been experienced difficulties, however you would, would imagine that. You know, if, if one group has been particularly boisterous such that they are disrupting other groups, you know, that are meeting in the classroom next door, that might be a reason for an administrator to visit more than once a quarter.
Well, and I, and I'd appreciate input from the administrators at these schools to see, you know, how they would respond to that, and some of these clubs are meeting in the morning and some of the afternoon. So if you're looking at twenty visits per quarter, and you have sixty school days in a quarter, and then you look at morning and afternoon, I, I don't think it's as taxing as, as it might sound. And again, I'm just throwing that out for discussion, I'm not locked into that, but, but I do think when we have this amount of, this clubs meeting and students involved, thousand students, that even if it's a roaming administrator there in the afternoon looking in on clubs and so forth, it, it just might add a comfort level to the community, add a comfort level to the parents.
They don't have to sit in a whole meeting, I mean, it could be a lot of walk-in evaluations. Maybe what would be interesting, if there's some clarification between student club and organization, I'll pull up the transcript, I really, I'll please go and get that.
I mean, I would, I would second your, your statement about getting input from school administrators. I think anything that we put together in terms of administrative procedures should have the input of administrators. I think it should also have the input of faculty members that are currently advising clubs. Like, how, how does this impact the club that I'm advising, or the clubs that I'm advising, and, and, and how could that be tweaked? They're the stakeholders, they're the people that are going to be responsible on it, on a daily or weekly basis implementing this, these procedures, we need to make sure that they are workable. I think one, another concern that I have about these, the way the administrative procedure is written right now, is that there are certain things that, they, they don't establish objective criteria. And I'll just give one or two examples. The first would, I don't know, the fifth or sixth bullet, going from the top, where it says, "Sponsors to be present at all club meetings to monitor and keep discussions in a positive professional atmosphere." What is positive and professional atmosphere could, is potentially subjective. I think, you know, something that would be more appropriate would be something to make sure that the meeting is conducted in compliance with applicable board policy, district policies, administrative procedures, and school policies. There, there you have, there you have some objective criteria that you can refer to and that they're enforceable, as opposed to something that is, well, what does positive mean? What, the other thing is, is, I think that there, there are a lot of good reasons for clubs to keep minutes, but I don't think it's necessary for a lot of these clubs, for example, the guitar club, to keep minutes at every meeting. So one of the suggestions that I would have is that, that, that there be a requirement that minutes be kept for business meetings. You define a business meeting as something where, you know, there's, there's electing officials, you know, dealing with financial transactions at behalf of the club, making policy decisions, planning trips, et cetera, that type of thing. And that there be a requirement that each club have a certain number of business meetings per quarter, that there be minutes, but-
Then you kind of get into electing officers. I mean, I didn't see where we, I didn't see where we mandated that they elected officers.
There isn't, but I-
If you get into only during business meetings now, you got to have officers.
Well, who's going to keep the minutes without an officer? I mean, so, I mean, that might be another, another thing, is that do, do, are the clubs required to have officers? Is there supposed to be, you know, a president and a secretary? If there's money, if there's money being handled-
There's money, yeah.
If there's money being handled, should there be a treasurer? There may not be a need for a treasurer at certain club, maybe the guitar club doesn't need a treasurer, but I could think, I mean, a lot of other clubs probably do and should have a treasurer.
I don't see, I don't see that you're about a record of attendance, and I think that's, that's what calls-
It's due to science.
But I don't see, I, I still think that all clubs should be required to at least turn in a bullet point list of what to place during the meeting. I don't care if it's playing, or not playing.
It's that way to him.
Yeah, whatever it is, there needs to be a bullet list of what to place in the meeting.
Well, if you have twenty-seven clubs and you don't have that, you really don't have control of what's going on in your building.
We have no clue what's going on.
That is so counterproductive.
I think we addressed that with Chuck at our board meeting. He addressed the minutes, and he thought, they all should. Anything else here that we need to, have Dr. Lummis bring back?
I guess what question, the question is at the top table for this, because there are a lot of questions out there, and there's, and probably a lot of research that we've asked Dr. Lummis to do, there's, several board members have stated that, that they would like to do additional research on their own. There's only seven days before our next meeting. You know, one thing that I had thought might be reasonable is that board policies, section six policies are up for review anyways in May. And that, you know, we can't really take a vote in terms of taking something off the agenda for, for next week's meeting. At this meeting, we can't do that as a board, but that might be a more reasonable time period to address these concerns in May.
I'd like to see it left on there for the Monday night meeting, and if something is not, I guess kind of hanging out there, if you will, we can, we can stay and move it out. But I'd like to see this on the agenda for Monday night.
I think you can just even leave it open for discussion Monday night. Something that you have to determine, this is going to be, I won't get every good information every time.
Well, the public has a right to know, because of all the emails we're getting, I don't know if I've read to you, but they're coming in today.
And that, that was my point, that, that we are getting a lot of input from the community, and we appreciate that.
And they do have a right.
They, and they, they should do that, but at the same time, they should be informed as we should be informed about. It should be informed decisions and informed requests, and if there's any information lacking, and it's, as we just said, when she's spelled out the bigger picture sometimes-
They need to know all of the ramifications, one way or the other.
We just need to get all the information out there, and it perhaps can happen this week, and it may take a month, it may take two months, we don't know.
Oh, I think our friends in the media will take care of it.
Okay, anything else on, on that? If not, we'll move down to the PSBA legislative agenda.